And who calls the members?
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay. Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Southwick.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
This time would entertain motion to approve the minutes in previous meeting.
So what?
Second.
Second.
Very discussion. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it. This time, presentation of petitions, communications, and notices. A general question period from members of the community. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Mike?
I've been doing a lot of investigating and checking on some new systems to upgrade for the wastewater pipe. Just going to take credit for that. I'm actually helping make it for the parents a little bit for decades and credits and spelling, right? Out of a lot of the systems that I've checked out, a lot of them were pretty expensive and weren't really the size of focus of us, which I know we're checking off our grants. Came up with a system through FlowTrend. I've got a picture over here if everyone wants to take a look at it. It starts going in the top corner. It's actually an upgrade from the bag system that we do have. It's basically a filtration system, except for no electronic parts. I called a gentleman facility there, and it's recommended they've actually changed a lot of miss valleys over to small towns and villages from bag systems to this. What this is going to do for us is presently, our goal now is to run about 200 minutes a day on the system that we have, and we get about 8,000 gallons a day that we're processing. This new system, we had two four-yard hoppers, is what they are. We could process anywhere from 12,000, so it would actually be an upgrade. And there is more ways you could do this system. You could actually put like a vacuum system on the outlets, and you could actually process this stuff within two hours and just dump it straight to the drying bed. There's no actual sitting time. If we went with just the hoppers, what we'd have to do is run the sludge into them, and then they would sit on a 24-hour basis, and then by the next morning, we could just still do the same thing, dump them straight into the drying beds. So eliminate any of the bags, pallets, and all the man-hours and labor and stuff that we have now. I don't know if anybody has any copies of all the prices that we've actually spent so far this year, and that can all be found in all of our records, this is stuff we've already spent. Drain that bags, I think we got $10,000, $3,400. Broken pallets, we haven't taken a lot yet because we haven't actually emptied the bags. We're probably a community service down there. Basically, upkeep and maintenance of the machine. It's about $10,000 we've spent so far in that system. I know we've kind of budgeted to take in about $50,000 from YF, but I know that depending on, you know, how other things work out in the sewer, it looks like possibly they have a surplus on that because YF is bringing us more. So it wouldn't be anything that taxpayers would have to pay for this, you know, if that's the case. The system itself with shipping is going to be just under $20,000. And as far as setup, you could have it set up and running within eight, pretty much. Anything else on that? Does anybody have any questions on any of that?
Well, thanks, Mike. Thank you. Spent some time on this stuff. I have one question.
Sure.
Do you know of anyone or been able to identify anybody who's actually using this yet?
I don't think so. I did talk to the gentleman, his name is Rick Hicks, that I talked to there. They were just switching a miss valley over, and I asked them if possible, if we contacted them, if we could get some information on this place, possibly contact somebody there. He said it didn't seem there should be a problem. I did not get back in touch when he wasn't there today to fax anything over, but it's something I could probably give him and have some fax over so we could, you know, contact the miss valley that has this to see, you know, how it worked for them.
Because the vendor would know, you know, we had sold some of these too, so we could find out how they not really liked it. Yeah, that's very good. Any other questions for Mike on this?
Would take much to adjust our current system to this.
Nope. We take the drainage systems out, which are, I believe, I'm guessing, but I think they're 220, so we'd be eliminating all the power source. The piping that we currently have, all you'd have to do is cut it out, shorten it up, put some downspouts to, you know, separate it over the hoppers. The drainage is set up with the drainage that we have now, so we could have that stuff done within a couple hours.
Is that application during the system?
Nope. Same setup. The only other thing that I didn't have on here was two other costs, which would be forks. We wouldn't need the Bobcat for this at all because the Bobcat would hold the weight, loaded, they're about 5,000 pounds. So we figured on using like the John Deere down there just as a loader. We could actually take the backhaul off it because it's got problems with it now. We got a set of forks for it. Forks, I don't know, one of the catalogs in the back, about $760. And I did talk to the manufacturer about putting casters on this because of the fact that the loader will not fit in that room. I told him it was a flat floor, and he said, basically, it's been done, it shouldn't be a problem, just so we could wheel it to the door and then, you know, hook up all the forks and dump it. So it'd be the only other expenses besides the hoppers themselves.
And it just stays in the drying bed until we come and pick it all up to carry it away?
Right.
In a bag?
Not in a bag. Drain out, take them right to the drying bed, dump them, just like we, well, the process that we used to take them out of the bags, and it was still kind of wet. This system here, after it's drained out, it'd actually be a little bit dry when we have no taking out of bags, so when they all in between work, it'll simplify it, basically.
Okay, well, we'll definitely look into that, Mike. Say two that is a good idea, possibly for the budget if the press grant doesn't, you know, certainly should consider.
Thanks. Are there any other comments from anyone else? If not, we'll have a report of Mike King from local enforcement officer.
I wasn't here last month, so I couldn't give you an update, but I did give you a letter in August of 2003, 2006 concerning the building on the corner of John Wayne Patterson's building, and he wrote back to the village asking for 60 days to have this building complied. What I can see, all that we've had after the 60 days of law, nothing's happened. So, you know, I deemed this an unsafe building that rook is going to collapse sooner or later. I don't know what the board's wishes are on this. If you want to follow the code, it's up to the board, you know, we have to, there's a process here involved. That's where I'm at with that, so you can tell me how you want to proceed. Before we go too far into this, an update on the Mrs. Weir's thing. I issued tickets to her August 24th, and still have not made it into the court system yet. So I am sort of disenchanting our legal system here, getting things done. I don't know what to do anymore. You know, Steve called me today. I've got junk problems on Church Street. I can go up there and issue tickets, but if nothing happens, I mean, I'd have to start issuing tickets now to get the grass cut by spring. So, you know, people need to tell me what you want me to do here.
What court, Mike? Are you going to file?
It ends up going into town court, of course. I mean, I just think that 90 days for a ticket like this is, I mean, I don't know if there's a problem or what the issues are, but I just don't see it as being a way to solve what we're trying to accomplish here. Cats are still being fed, there's other places with garbage around, it's a no-win situation.
So what you're saying, Mike, is that you're issuing tickets and they're not?
I've issued one set of tickets, and this is sort of a trial run. I wanted to see how this was going to go, and I'm not at all satisfied with the outcome. No, apparently it's been postponed. She got a lawyer, and they're playing telephone tag, but, you know, last week they didn't show up in court, so it gets postponed another week, and I don't know how long this can go on, so.
Have you asked how long? The court?
Well, I've talked to the judge a couple of times, you know, without being too vocal about it, but I did explain that I wasn't too happy with the way things were going. I just think 90 days is too long for something like this. I mean, you get a speeding ticket, you're in court the following week. Why does it take 90 days for something like this? I understand that he was out with an illness and surgery and this and that, that took some time, but still. So I don't know if the board wants to intervene, send a letter, or if you want me to just continue doing what I'm doing, I'll write the tickets. It's a very time-consuming process. I'm not like a trooper or somebody like that can just issue tickets. It takes me about a day to do a ticket. By the time I do all the information, complaints, deposition, and this and that, get them notarized, so it's a lengthy process. I mean, I've got that. There's three, four in the village that, you know, junk needs to be picked up, tickets need to be issued, it's been warned, and I've got a whole file here, and you do get the letters and I write them, so.
Well, maybe if we write a letter to the judge?
Well, I can't probably give you a good answer right now, Mike, but you are, but we do intend to pursue these, and I guess we'll get together and come up with a plan of action and see if we can expedite some of these kinds of things for us because we are serious about, you know, some of these buildings are dangerous, they have animals in them. That one, I would guess, you're probably right. We have a good wet snow, that's.
That comes under your Section 6010 in your village code of what the board's reaction or action has to be after we've done this survey, and we've allowed him 60 days to do it, and he's come back with nothing. He hasn't done anything there. He cut the grass and moved it fresh, but that's not fixing the road. I really don't think he has any intention of fixing the road. I don't see any progress in that building.
Well, we support you, Mike, and we'll come up with a plan of action to try and remedy this.
Okay, anything would be appreciated.
We appreciate you, Mike, for what you've done.
No, I mean, I don't mind doing it. I mean, I'll get after everybody that I can to do their part, but unless I get something behind me, you know, after a while, people are just going to continue what they continuously do, which is nothing, so the problem's never going to get resolved. We had an issue with another thing, with a pig in the village. Went around and around. Finally, the guy took care of it on his own, but that doesn't mean that this is not going to reoccur again in the spring of the year. And the neighbor was quite upset about it, just a lot, justified me so. It's very vague in the village code under the zoning section, and I think that needs to be looked at, and a clear version of what we need to identify as farm animals or what you want or don't want in the village, because it's sort of a gray area in there. We don't want to get into that deal yet. But for now, the porky's gone for the winter, I hope.
Is he bacon?
I'm going there.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Question?
Do you want to go over the Horizon Heights thing that we discussed the planning board regarding building permits?
Okay. We had a public hearing for Horizon Heights, and there was a subdivision attached with that for receives two lots, which is separate from that. There will be a public hearing for that, but the Horizon Heights, the way it's set up right now, they're asking me to issue building permits to build a house, which I don't really have any problem with. And when it comes to issuing CO, all I'm looking at is, is the house completed. Issuing a CO does not involve anything for me concerning, is the road finished, or the street paved, and this type of stuff. This is something in the village, I believe you have some sort of mortgage or a note to guarantee that he's going to do this. And that becomes the question now. He asked me on the phone, you know, would they allow him to build out the four lots before they require him to pave it? That's something you people are going to have to decide how far along. And the other thing is, is once I issue a CO and there's someone's living in that house, is the village going to plow that street if it's unpaved, or who's going to maintain the street? So there's a few questions here.
I don't know if this is appropriate timing to do it under my portion, but I don't really want to discourage him from trying to build a home, but we should not be responsible for the upkeep of that road if it's not paved.
It's not needed for the village.
That's right. And what I'm thinking is that we need some type of resolution discussion, obviously, with respect to whether we want to allow the building to start before the street is paved, under conditions that he will maintain that. Because very soon, if it's not already, the quarry's going to shut down for, I mean, it's shut down. It is shut down now.
There won't be days this year, that's for sure.
Right. But I think what covers us is that, I forget, it's like a mortgage or a supply of credit, that he has to provide us in order to guarantee that that infrastructure will be complete. So if he builds a home, and we agree that we'll allow him to do that before it's paved, then he'll agree to maintain it, plow it, whatever, someone is actually occupying a home before it's paid next year, then we would get the money back anyway through that certificate or something, and it's all true.
Now, another thing, they brought their final plans in today as built, and we're having a meeting here, I believe it's the 29th, to go over this, and once that's approved, this is filed with the county, has a completed project as far as what they're required to do. I'll accept the paving and whatever bond or assurance that the village has, ensuring that he, you know, the developer's going to do all this stuff. So this will be complete, I'm assuming. I don't consider it a major step, there were one or two minor changes, a couple of loopholes that were put in here and there. That was it. So I would assume that the final plan for this is going to be approved at the planning board meeting and filed with the county. So the only thing left to do would be for him to transfer all the easements that are on this phase one to the village, some drainage easements there, and then, of course, the street, once it's paid. Now, until it's paid, you have that bond or mortgage or whatever, that note that you have. So that's your guarantee that, should he default, you would use that to pay for the project.
What does he anticipate beginning?
Well, he was pretty anxious about getting one started this fall. Like I say, I mean, I can issue the permits as long as I have all of the required documentation, it's not a problem. And if the house is completed and meets the New York State Building Code, I have to issue a CO, but a road being paved or not paved is not part of what I would review as a part of issuing a CO. So then the person moves in there, well, we build a whole street, that becomes issue.
Thanks, Mickey. Any other questions for Mickey? Okay. Proceeding with my mayor report. Something that's come to light, and I think Greg has mentioned this to me before, some of the residents have been complaining about unstable ground around their houses. I know it's not something we can act upon right now, but it may be something we want to look at, to get engineering study or something done on soils or whatever, to see if there actually is a problem. More and more people have approached me on this, so it's something we'll need to look at.
But is that something we'd be responsible, private property?
Well, no, it's not to establish responsibility, but we're trying to find out what may be causing this. Is it soil type? Whatever. I don't know, but people have brought it for.
It's also trucks on that street that should, trucks on that street should be on. And that's the other problem, that the load limits are not being enforced.
And there's still traffic that you can't, I think, though.
Oh, school buses.
School buses, driving example. I don't know if we need to make sure our streets are flatter. I know people live in houses point where they have tractor trailers go by there, they live on Lake Street, they go by all night, they don't have a problem with it, only with the noise of the trucks. Anyway, it's something we'd have to investigate. I don't have an answer, but this time, but we may need to look into that. We have an election notice that needs to be read.
Whereas the next village election, office of the village of Champlain, New York, will be held on March 20th, 2007. Whereas the Board of Trustees of said village must designate by resolution the public officers which are to be filled at such election and the terms thereof when be therefore resolved. As Board of Trustees of the village has determined the following offices to be filled and to be voted thereupon, with the terms such offices respectively known as follows: Mayor, term two years; trustee, term two years; trustee, term two years. Be it for the result that has required for Section 15-104-3A of Village Election Law, notice of said village election to be given at four months prior to said election date, that the offices should be voted upon at said election, be likewise included in said notice.
Think we have to vote on that, though?
Yes.
Entertain motion to accept the resolution for reelections? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion is carried. The other thing, I think our last yard debris pickup, do you know the exact date of that?
Twenty twenty.
Is that scheduled?
The last one we had? I'm not exactly sure.
That we had scheduled.
I thought it was the 23rd, actually. There you go, too. We have another 20th. I thought he asked him about the last one.
The next, did that's been in the paper, Donna, or we do, or did we put that in?
I believe I already put that in.
Okay. Okay, reports from trustees. Oh, anybody have any questions? If not, trustee Tremblay?
I attended the zoning board meeting this past week. There was public hearing for John Courtney, for the old independent products building. His experience was granted, so hopefully he'll be able to lease out some space and bring a little more business into the village. And there were several of us that attended the school board meeting last week, which was really a good showing for the village, and also extremely pleased that the engineering firm was able to bring up a new proposal that will basically have no tax impact, it sounds like, to the taxpayers. I think they're going to have another meeting sometime this week, or was it maybe tonight? The bookworm's going to have like an emergency meeting.
20th.
So it's really good that they're realizing that some of their plans were way out of reach financially for this community.
Southwick. So PC.
Kudos to the engineer for bringing up something that sounds like it's going to be a lot more workable, and it was a nice showing for the village board there, so. Lengthy meeting, though. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions on trustee Tremblay's report? Thank you, Kim. Trustee Martin?
Our shared services grant was submitted on time, the 23rd of October, date for submission. There's a no shared services meeting this month. It's supposed to be November 2nd, that was canceled. We have information on Operation Safe Child, and I would highly recommend that all parents take their children for a, for the fingerprints and for the picture ID provided by the second county sheriff's department on November 18th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Town of Champlain Office Building. If you can contact the town office at 298-816-0 for more information. I don't know if the board has had a chance to look at this New York State Recurricipation Plan for employees, but I think if it's, I think it looks like a pretty good plan, you know, to put some money away for retirement. I guess a thank you for Juanita Woody for completing the training courses. I'd like to thank the village crew for finally getting some movement down at the water plant to get some, to get pumps, to get the new pump in, and the old pumps functioning better than they are. And again, Mike, thank you for your research. I guess the preschools and the little business. And I'd like to ask for executive session. Would you like to?
We used to bring those up to the end, so.
Four o'clock.
Personal issue. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for trustee Martin? Thanks. Trustee Southwick?
I attended a local government training workshop with Mike, Donna, Aaron, myself. I was very worthwhile. There were some excellent presentations on water and sewer and shared services, a lot of things that we're involved in, and shows that we are keeping up with what other communities are doing, the recent grant process, shared services as well. Planning board meeting, we discussed a little bit. I just want to highlight a couple other things regarding that meeting. The planning board approved the use of swales, small drainage ditch, drainage ditches, excuse me, rather than a closed system. The health department, and also, we see is recommending using that system because it actually has a more effective natural filtering system. If you think about, you know, your kids playing in a ditch, actually help back some of the stuff that was flowing through it, whereas the closed system just takes everything and dumps it right out. So that passed, but also a covenants to be put on each property so that if someone has a sub-pump that needs to drain out into that ditch, that it will be subsurface from the property to the ditch and have a small, just a small end that's going to be exposed that handle water on the ditch itself. Very good meeting. Mr. Fleming wasn't there, but his representatives were there. And I just want to also mention that I was very, very happy with the number of people that came out to attend that school board meeting regarding the future plans of our whole system, and that myself were there, and many other concerned citizens, not just from the village of Champlain, but from other communities as well. I must say, I thought it was kind of ironic that all of a sudden, out of the blue comes this, you know, plan where there's no tax effect on the taxpayers. I don't want to sound negative, but it seemed a little bit interesting that that all of a sudden could come out as a last ditch effort to get something in front of the taxpayers that was more attractive than what was being presented. And I'd like to encourage everybody to go on to the November 20th meeting as well, because that one's going to be a special meeting to discuss options that came up in light of many people that went there, voiced their opinion, directed where the board's heading with this.
Then we got a question, trustee Southwick's report. I just had one comment. I really enjoyed that, the conference in Palm Stadium also, it was really great. They had many different courses at each time period, so we all split up and we all came away with something, something that was of use to the village, was very, very good. Okay? Trustee Garrett?
We had the annual Halloween costume party on October 28th. I was not able to attend, I was in Minneapolis, but Joanne Favreau ran it, and my daughters Christina and Carrie, so I'd like to thank them for taking over that event, and thank Mayor Moore and his wife who did the judging for it. We had about 50 kids show up, so it was a really good turnout for it again. A thank you to McDonald's, they again donated the juice and the prizes for the contest. Kenny Drugs gave us all the candy that was given out, and Price Shopper donated the donuts. So thank you once again to all of those businesses who stepped up to the plate. And the Christmas decorating contest, which everyone looks forward to, the judging will take place of the week of December 18th. So make sure your lights are turned on so the judges go by and can see.
Thank you. Any questions for trustee Garrett? Donna will have the report, the clerk treasurer.
The revenue and expectations of this topic for the board for October.
This time, I intend to motion to pay the water. This one?
I need to add one more voice to that, for picking both for the amount of 200 hours.
Well, is that because of our water service? Or is that just reordering machine?
Yeah.
Is that two hundred in general or two hundred in each?
We divide them.
You're dividing the two hundred or?
We divide the two hundred.
Okay. Okay.
All right, we have motion with the two hundred, fifty bowls included in the water. Any second?
I have.
Is there any discussion?
Under the water pump? Three hundred and fifty dollars for water tank coverage.
That was when Larry was on vacation, and a gentleman from Rouse's Creek that came up every day for their testing.
Okay, is there any further discussion or questions? Not, uh, trustee Chongway?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Motion is carried. There won't be a report from superintendent this week, he is out sick. I wish he, wish him, uh, speedy recovery. Uh, Donna, correspondence.
Letter to New York State Gas and Electric requesting that a street might be installed on Locust Street in front of the Living Water Baptist Church. Letter to break plumbing regarding testing of the water and sewer lines at Horizon Heights. Report from Bruce Supernov for April through September drought control. Correspondence from DOT regarding updating highway inventory for the village. Correspondence from Flint County Health Department regarding monitoring violation. Correspondence from DOT regarding CHIPS fund. Correspondence to water quality improvement projects regarding round nine application, application for state assistance payments. Correspondence from Carolyn Tatro CPA regarding audit of the Riverfront Park project. Uh, that's correspondence to eight, maybe, two minutes. Correspondence from the Department of Health regarding water supply emergency plan. Correspondence from Flint County Health Department regarding Town of Champlain water district sampling. Correspondence from Border Industrial Park regarding credit on sewer bill. Correspondence from New York State Emergency Management Office regarding property acquired through the Hazard mitigation grant program.
Under old business, we have time for table franchise, I believe that's still in the process.
I'm gonna have to make contact again with the town and the village around this point. Could be a bad one.
Did you read, there was a thing about Ross, what we're supposed to have the union sign their next fran- the franchise? They did.
Was it the town Nikki or at least?
I'm not sure about the town, but the village, at their last meeting, they had a, their board meeting, I'm quite sure that they agreed to sign their contract with that.
Is it annual?
They didn't really go into detail, they just mentioned time order.
There's something to check on, and can we call them and ask them to, to copy it? The boiler quotes, uh, prepared to make recommendation, Greg, or?
I would, I would like to see this table for just another month so we can get the persons who sit in bits and things explained to us.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, under new business, we have, uh, a new revised, I should say new revised salt sand agreement with the Town of Champlain. Molly, would you read the changes in that?
Uh, I have a copy of it, I'm gonna go ahead.
Okay, I think I know the changes here. I think there was an addition of a street or two, wasn't there?
There was the one change to include stating that we would sand and salt, the row that was one.
Okay, plow, sand, and salt.
Right.
In the contract.
Number seven on the streets to plow from, uh, the Tallahassee Church Street to the, to Route eleven, up at Cemetery, uh, by pepper corn, that was added to the original contract. And then the, to the last paragraph, uh, stating about our superintendent calling, uh, highway superintendent, I don't know if you wanna read just that one paragraph that had a couple of changes in it.
Yeah, I can read that. As part of this, this agreement, the town agrees to load the village trucks as needed during regular working hours. In the event that the village is sanding streets when the town is not working, the village superintendent may contact the town highway superintendent to request an operator to load the village trucks, and the town agrees that we'll provide an operator holding in the event that one is available to the town. The lawyers gotta hold it out.
So, do they always have someone on call like we do? Or is it a pick and choose, I'm not going to come in and load that?
It's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. Pretty much, we're gonna, we're gonna have a whole load of sand in the truck when it's back here. So we're gonna have at least a whole load to use each time we go out. The only time that could happen is if, if the town is not out when we're out. And I can't envision there being a time when the town is, is not sanding and we are.
Yeah, it's pretty much if there's a snowstorm in the town, there's probably pretty much a Champlain also.
I'd, I'd like to say that this is, this is gonna involve a little bit of give and take here, and I think it's gonna work out.
Is there, anybody wanna make motion to, uh, accept the revised agreement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I said it already today. Sorry.
I, I guess in a case of emergency, just by sanding by the water.
That's true.
Use that.
Okay, any further discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
Uh, Mayor, that will need your signature, and we need the town's meeting this tomorrow, and I've already, okay, I've already faxed it to them, so they had a copy of it, I think.
Okay. Uh, okay, we have a resolution for adoption of the National Incident Management System? Need that later?
Adoption of the National Incident Management System. It is hereby resolved by the village of Champlain stating, whereas the Homeland Security Preservation Division, nationalized by the President Director of State Department of Homeland Security to develop and administer a national incident management system, which would provide consistent nationwide approach for federal, state, local, and tribal governments to work together more efficiently, more effectively and efficiently to prevent, prepare, or respond to and recover from domestic incidents regardless of cause, size, or severity. Whereas, collection, collective input and guidance from all federal, state, local, and tribal Homeland Security partners have been and will continue to be vital to the development of effective implementation and utilization of comprehensive NIMs. And whereas it is necessary that all federal, state, local, and tribal emergency management agencies and personnel coordinate their efforts to effectively and efficiently provide the highest levels of incident management, whereas to facilitate most effective and effective, efficient and effective incident management, it is critical that federal, state, local, and tribal organizations utilize standardized terminology, standardized organizational structures, uniform personal qualified qualification standards, uniform standards for planning, training, and exercising comprehensive resource management and designated incident facilities during emergencies and or disasters. And whereas, standardized procedures for managing personnel, communication facilities, and resources will improve the state's ability to utilize federal funding to enhance local and state agency readiness, maintain first responder safety, and streamline incident management processes. And whereas, the incident command system components of NIMs are already integral to part of various incident management activities throughout the state, including all public safety and emergency response organizations' training programs. Whereas, National Commission of Terrorist Attacks, nine eleven commission recommended adoption of the standard incident command system. Now therefore, pursuant to the authority vested in me by the State of Champlain in provision of village law, I do hereby mandate the National Incident Management System utilized for all incident management in the village of Champlain.
Okay, is there a motion for a resolution for adoption of the NIMs system? Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. We did so well with that one, either. Did you read our resolution of appreciation of the NIMs to the family of Bruce Barkum?
Resolution of appreciation of the NIMs, whereas Bruce Barkum passed away on November first, two thousand and six, and whereas Bruce had served the residents of the area, area communities for many, many years in various positions with the Champlain Fire Department and Champlain Fire District. And whereas Bruce's many years of dedication and faithful service speaks volumes about, about his concerns with well-being of citizens of all community. And whereas Bruce's invaluable knowledge and wisdom will be greatly missed by all members of our community. Whereas Bruce was always a valued and trusted member of the area business, community, through his family's business at Arco's Furniture. Now therefore, be it resolved, village of Champlain Board and Trustees, uh, can humorously thank Bruce Barkum for his dedication and community spirit, and offer condolences to his wife and family for their great loss.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion. The board like to second that?
Second.
All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, we also have, uh, I don't get a chance to get this on the agenda, but, uh, we'd like to, uh, secure the services of a negotiator to work with the village team. It's the North Country Labor Relations Associates Incorporated. They work for ninety dollars an hour plus travel expenses, but that was pretty reasonable. They're out of late classes, so I have to run away. So, we'd entertain a motion to, uh, hire this negotiator to work with us?
Accept motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why do we need to hire someone?
Uh, we, we reached a point where we, we need to have, have somebody else come in.
How many hours do you think that we need to spend on this?
That, that would depend on how long it takes. We did put money aside in the budget for this, so it's not like we don't have the money for it.
How much money aside?
I don't remember exactly what we did.
You know what? Can you tell, like, what we're applying?
Personal services, yes, we did. I have a number of ideas, but I didn't say it for the chance of being wrong.
So we can't come to an agreement, so we have to hire someone to come to an agreement?
No, we need some additional expertise on this, because it is public sector, and, uh, I'm not as familiar with public sector as I am with private sector, so there are some things that we need to try to get us, us to kind of bog down. We've gone to, uh, the union is clear that it passed, so we need to, uh, keep things moving. Is there any further discussion?
Are we gonna put a limit on the number of hours for this, or until it's resolved?
Well, whatever we need. We have to continue with this. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Not all in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. The other thing we need to do is, uh, it's tomorrow, unfortunately Donna registered them, we need to send Larry and Terry to the water class in the middle of the hall. So I would like to take a motion to, uh, send them to water class.
Sure.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. And I just have one other motion that we need to do. I'd like to make a point, or not point, uh, I want to prove Marie Dupree as, all right, excuse me, Marie Dupree as election inspector. We need to have one more election inspector for this issue to resolve. So, entertain a motion to have Marie Dupree as, uh, number election inspector. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, just take your time.
I, I mentioned it, and I just thought of it, you know, Red Richard Killian approached me, and I approached him about whether he'd be interested in being our village historian. He's very much interested. He's kind of a snowbird, but I'm in touch with him quite often, so I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Richard Red Killian as village historian.
Okay, is there a second? Uh, any discussion? I would just like to comment that it's probably timely that we do have a good person in there because of, I think it's two thousand and nine, they had that, I mean, uh, four hundred year anniversary.
Hard, uh, centennial, I guess.
Yes.
That's why I said four hundred years.
Celebration.
Well, he's, he's very interested in this, because he's, he's did vaults, I assume, as far as providing pictures. He did quite an extensive collection, you know, of really of the village itself, so I, I think it's, I think it's something people will be in the job with, she seems very interested, which is encouraging.
Can I mention one other thing that goes, kinda goes along with that? I've had quite a few people calling about the calendars that we've had for the last few years, and I emailed David Patrick, who was the gentleman that puts these together, and they're at the printers now, so they should be out very shortly. And it sounds like it's gonna be quite a nice calendar, better than what we've seen so far, a lot of historical, more so than normal narratives, and silly podcast was in the air today, so it's a really good calendar, so we'll have them here.
So, that's a, that's an excellent idea. Okay, all, all in favor of making, uh, Red Killian the village historian, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, does anybody else have any other in business?
Are we gonna discuss the code issue, so we know what we're gonna do?
Well, I don't know, is that something we're gonna be able to resolve tonight, or do we need to get together and discuss this with a whole board plan? I don't know. Do you think we should?
Well, we have an official meeting to get together, we can't get together.
Well. I think we have a committee to, to do this. I re- I really think we should, you know, caucus on this a little bit before we try to come up with a solution. I know we wanna, we wanna back Mickey up on this, and I think we're headed in the right direction. We need to, I think we need to contact the village attorney and see perhaps what, what options are available to us before we try to decide what we want to do at this point. Well, it'd be a good, good topic for the next meeting, though, we should be prepared to have that discussion the next meeting. I think it'd be a good idea. Okay, anything other in business?
Hello?
Would you have other questions?
Okay, was that about what we talked about, border and industrial?
All opposed? All in the interest of.
Everybody that had a thought? Yeah, Amy was just looking at it.
Letter number eleven, correspondence, correspondence from border industrial parks regarding credit.
Yeah, but there's an update. There was a memo from myself.
Yeah, but there was a memo from myself.
Okay, I wish we could look at that.
Let's show the article.
Okay, Donna, was this what you found to be a, probably a correct estimate?
Um, yes, other than...
The actual water usage?
Uh, right. Trustee Martin had a question whether we should use the estimated figure from the last three billings to go with the last actual reading, which was done in July. And use that as a figure to subtract the, the current billing from.
It just seems like this has been estimated, these things have been estimated for so long here. Why we, you know, why this continues, I really don't know. You know, for five years or so, or four years or whatever, 2001, it starts here. But it seems to me that if we're considering this, you know, in this discussion, if we're considering this, I think we should look at the actual readings to come up with, what do we come up with per day?
So 227 gallons a day for using what was...
Okay, can we make a motion and then discuss it? Somebody wanna make a motion that we offer credit to border industrial park?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, now we can proceed with discussion. Greg, continue.
Donna, come up with the, with the usage per cycle here of just under 20, or just over 20,000 gallons, which would mirror the actual billing on July 1st of '06. This whole thing about 67,000 gallons here, it kind of bothers me, 67,000 plus gallons, how this, how this was come up with and how this water, this leakage was, was allowed to continue here. I just, I guess I have trouble grabbing that. And using the, using the figure 14.6 thousand gallons times, times the 43,000, it was up to $613.18. To me, it would be, to me, it would be more effective, or I think more logical for me to, to take the actual readings and use that figure of 36,000 gallons rather than the 67,000 plus here.
What if we wait on this? Because we just fixed this meter and then all of a sudden they've got this leak, why don't we wait till we have two, three good readings, two or three good readings without a leak to get a real estimate to then see if a credit is warranted? We've had five years of estimating at 11,000 gallons of water. Who knows what the real usage is? So if we wait for three cycles and then ask them to resubmit their credit at that point, if a credit is so due warranted, then we can look at it more reasonably, but we haven't ghost guessed in town what the reality is here.
Why isn't it estimated for five years?
It's broken.
Whose responsibility is it to fix it?
The owners.
There, yeah, there's...
Whose responsibility is it to push the owner?
It's ours.
Want me, want me to explain to you what happened there?
No, we don't need to get into that. I think we need to research this. I don't, Greg, do you want to...
Yeah, I'd like to.
Is that a point of view, Steve?
No, I agree.
Okay, do you want a table list so we can have time?
I would prefer table for at least one more cycle.
Greg, make a motion to table this.
Yes, make a motion to table this at least one more water cycle.
Okay. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That was a table for one more water billing cycle?
Water billing cycle.
Three, three months.
Three months.
Okay, was there any other new business?
Could I ask if some of this, was there any, was there a, some sort of agreement or some sort of discussion or some sort of coming together with the town on this, on this enforcement issue with the town just now?
Yeah, there should be a meeting on that.
We'll, we'll see with our representatives.
Yes, we will be sending two people to that. So the town will be along for it. I guess something we need to answer. But at this time, I'd like to make a motion to have executive session discuss a disciplinary action.
Can I ask one more question before we do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay. The NISIC, is this something that Woody would re-look at, research to see if we are, we have chosen the correct option so far? Because by the beginning of the summer, before we have our next meeting, we have to choose which supply choice we're gonna go with, whether we're gonna go with ESCO or NISIC. And I know that when my husband researched it for us, it made a big difference in our bill when we chose the other option.
Still pay NISIC, sure, that's fair.
You pay, you pay the delivery charge on our waters.
Yeah.
Because everyone, it's only the, on the electrical usage portion of it that you...
But we did drop significant, we can only look at our street lighting accounts. But I think that we should take a look at it, or, you know, assign this so that it's checked out and make sure it's done. Otherwise, you automatically get NISIC.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to make a motion to check into that.
No, I don't think so either, but I just wanna make sure we don't forget about it and the date comes and goes, because it's gonna be gone before our next meeting.
I think we can still deal with it. What, right now?
Well, no, it is 2019.
We have NISIC solution as our supplier now.
Right.
I didn't read the letter. Is it saying that it will revert to NISIC instead of keeping it the way we have it?
No, it'll stay with what we have now, but there's other choices now as ESCO supply choices or NISIC supply choices. There's another choice in here, and when you go online, you can research and see the history of what the rates are and everything.
And the last time we did it, we had, I think it was either keeping it at a fixed rate, two were variable, and I remember that was a decision that the board made.
I think that NISIC solutions was, was the cheapest that anyone's ever researched it.
Now they have a new one, ESCO. I never heard of it, so we just got ours in the mail too, so I just wanted to make sure that we didn't let this slide so much easily and forget things.
Why would it just be the lighting, street lighting? That would have been something...
It said, it said, your municipality has street lighting accounts with NISIC with, which the enrollment materials do not specifically address. However, the supply choices described below are available for your street lighting accounts. Those are valid for that as well. And the other training thing for the pipe, HDPE pipe and applications training session?
It's that they're going to tomorrow.
Oh, this is tomorrow? Okay, all right.
Okay, I'll take...
Sorry.
Take a second with my motion.
Second.
Executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a question, please.
That one part is still working pretty good.
It runs.
Yeah, that's right.